So I'd like to call the open meeting of the Sherburne School Committee to order. It's February 9th, it's 5:30 PM and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. And due to the state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to COVID-19, we are allowed to conduct our meetings via internet or remote. We're doing it via Zoom. The Zoom number was posted online on our school website, as well as the agenda that accompanies this meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. And accordingly, please be aware that everyone can see what you are doing and take care not to screen share your computer and anything that you are doing may be captured by the recording and broadcast out to the full world. So we will have time for community comments at the beginning of this meeting, and it's an opportunity for the members of the community to be heard. Please make your comments brief, two to three minutes, and move the discussion forward by adding any new information that you have. And it's just helpful as a time matter to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Community comments are an opportunity for us to listen to members of the community, and it's not a forum where we answer questions or engage in public debate. So if you have a comment to make, we would love to hear it, and it's something that we can take away. Once that has been completed, we will no longer take comments from the general public. We will move on with the agenda as stated online. And at that point, we will be operating as our regular school committees committee meetings usually do. And we invite everyone to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but also understand that we also understand that many of you may not be able to do so. And if you need to leave the Zoom call, that is fine. So with that being said, I will introduce each item on the agenda. And then if you are a committee member and need to be heard, just raise your hand or you can do it in the side either way. And if someone raises their hand and I don't see it, if somebody else will kind of say, Angie, they're there, that'd be great. So with that being said, do we have any community comments? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to move on to the next item, which is the reports. We'll start first with Dr. Brown and her principal's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see you. Dr. Keo, I don't know how you had a crystal ball, but you, today was a perfect day on the hill. Our children were squealing with just the right amount of snow to play in. So I wish I, I wish I had a video camera on hand during recess. It was very joyful. I included in my principal's report, believe it or not, we are just beyond the halfway mark of the school year. Our report cards went home, or they go in the parent portal, and they're accessible in the homes this past Friday. I'm pleased to announce that for the first year ever, both DS elementary schools are on the same reporting period. So that's great logic. And, and thank goodness that was in the works prior to, to the pandemic, because our five teachers who teach in the remote schoolhouse had their work cut out for them. Many of those teachers have children, both that feed from Chickering School and from Pine Hill School. So that all worked out well. We are in the process of collecting applications for our preschool program next year. Families will be notified in the next couple of weeks if they have the opportunity to have a slot in our preschool. And as I indicated in my principal's report, we have 60 children that, according to the town census, are eligible to enroll in public school next year. So we've reached out to all of those families by snail mail, because we, initially, we only have their mailing addresses. And then, of course, we get their emails and more specific information so that we may send official registration information. Both Pine Hill and Chickering Schools are aligned again for the first time this year in an online registration process for families that we hope will be super efficient and get all the information we need. So I always feel like Santa Claus this time of year, making our list and checking it twice. But it, but it's an exciting time of year. We will obviously put a lot of thought and creativity into how to welcome children in their parents with information virtually. And then, of course, we will build in in-person meet opportunities right before the start of the school year, which is what we ended up doing this year due to the pandemic. Um, the, we had the great, a great opportunity for a team of our teachers, five or six Pine Hill educators, were able to join a unique professional development opportunity through the Education Collaborative. In complement to our DS aid work, Tech Collaborative is running, they're welcoming teams from a variety of their, of their feeding districts to participate in webinars, a series of webinars. They happen to be on Thursday afternoons, looking at culturally responsive and sustainable pedagogy. And this opportunity came at a great time. It really complements the social justice curriculum work we're doing, and of course, the, the DS aid work that the, that the district is committed to, to moving forward. I'm trying to, oh, as you know, we're not welcoming visitors to our building by way of enrichment programs, but of course, our CSA and our teachers have found virtual enrichment opportunities. So we have, this month, we had, first grade and second grade had some, some special enrichment opportunities. There's more grade level enrichment booked for the upcoming months and some school-wide enrichment. And again, we're playing with formats on Zooms and webinars and, and some new creative ways. I know Marlene Custodia was here representing our second grade. They, they built, our second graders had a, related to their, their science unit on matter. It looked much more steam and engineering oriented to me. But they, they worked with folks from NASCAR and built stock cars on the back playground recently. And it was, there were squills of delight coming from, from the kids. It was very brave of the teachers to try this, this, this virtual opportunity. Trying to, I think those are the big highlights, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but all is well. I, I think last month I gave a proper shout out to Jill Fidor, but I cannot impress upon all of you how very, very lucky we are to have her at the helm, leading us through logic and calm and sensibility during, during this pandemic. She's, she's, she's keeping us all afloat. So we're, we're in good hands and all is going well.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Dr. Brown or any comments? Well, Dr. Brown, it sounds like you're busy as usual on the hill. Even in COVID restrictions, there still is creativity. So we appreciate that from all of our faculty and staff at Pine Hill.
Our kids would have it no other way. We follow their lead and it always leads us to inspiring places.
Well, I miss coming on the hill, but like you said, there are no visitors. But someday I hope to get back there because it is a fun place. So next in your packet is the warrant report. Dawn, is there anything you want to bring out other than signing warrants is becoming more difficult? Dawn, they've taken the stairs away after somebody's there. It's like, I have to wait for the perfect storm to be, and then I sit in the parking lot. It looks like something out of a spy novel. They come out, they hand them to me through a window, and I call back. It's really quite funny. You should, you should film it someday.
We appreciate you continuing to, to do that for us. And in your packet tonight, you have the warrants that were signed since your meeting in December, since we didn't meet in January, your list looks a little longer. And it covers us through February 4th. Again, those are always available. We always keep copies here. So if anyone wants to look, they don't have to go to Town Hall. They're more than happy to come here and flip through anything that they have questions.
And I would encourage that because to try to get into Town Hall could be a little trying. So there you go. So moving on, the fiscal year 21 monthly financial report. Dawn, if you, is there anything to address?
I'll just highlight, so what I've been doing is trying to do a cumulative financial report for you. So we don't lose the information that's been reported along the way. So if anything's in bold, that's the new information that I have to share for this particular month. And so just, you'll see that on expenditures, we have had some additional support services for special education for some of our students. So you'll see that that line item now has gone negative by about $15,000. On the flip side, the good news is they finally finalized Circuit Breaker for the year. So I was able to know what our amount was going to be. And therefore, we took some of your out-of-district tuitions that were being charged to the general fund and moved them over to Circuit Breaker since we knew we had a solid number. So you will see that now that has become a positive variance of about 50,000 versus a negative variance of your report back in, in December. Now, and at the bottom of your report too, for the first time, you actually have the amount of Circuit Breaker that we're expecting to get. They are reimbursing Circuit Breaker at the mandated 75% this year. So the number I'm showing you should be the number that we end up with. And like some years, you know, it's a little bit less, and then they do an adjustment in that fourth quarter. Right now, we're estimating that we, they're paying it out at 75%. So the, the $398,000 you see there is what we're anticipating to receive in Circuit Breaker. And just to, that also includes anything that we get on in district Circuit Breaker too. So those numbers are there now for you to see. And just a reminder that we're using $325,000 in Circuit Breaker against your operating funds this year, which is why then, once that number was sort of solid for us, we brought some additional tuitions over to Circuit Breaker.
Does anyone have any questions for Dawn? I'm pleased about the 75%. I've got to say, I was a little concerned that it was going to dip down this year.
So as we all know, I think they're trying to keep everyone whole for fiscal year 21. So I think the bigger, we do that fiscal year 22 is going to be where they might not have all the federal funding, the potential rainy day fund to keep it afloat. So they're just starting the fiscal year 22 budget process. They are just for purposes of you guys, if you remember, we talked about last year, the opportunity for Circuit Breaker reimbursement on special education out-of-district transportation. So that was taken off the plate for fiscal year 21. But so far, the budget that Governor Baker presented is bringing back all the Student Opportunity Act initiatives. The key there though is if they can't reimburse 75% of tuition, the transportation reimbursement doesn't even kick in. So I think that's the big unknown, and we won't know that obviously till later. So I think all districts are looking at that as not taking into consideration for budgeting purposes. But if you do end up getting some reimbursement, it's actually funds that you weren't anticipating. It's too risky to assume you're going to get anything on transportation at this point. So we'll, we'll keep our, our ears and eyes open on that. But, so that was the good news. At least it looks like it's coming back into the realm, but we're not sure what that really means for us moving forward.
Fingers crossed that it still works out for FY22. It always gets kicked down the line. So that leads us to our discussion of the fiscal year 22 operating budget and where we are right now with that.
Right. So I don't really have any significant new information for you. I was hoping I might have a little more insight into actually your out-of-district transportation. That's contracted out through accept, but they're still in the process of finalizing how they're going to move forward, not to give you too much detail. But if you remember, we had like a matrix was really based off, our charges this year were really based off the students that we transported last year. So it was a little bit, they were doing some of that Circuit Breaker where, you know, you're always like behind a year. Now with the potential of reimbursement for transportation, they have to actually step back and be more in tune with the students that you're driving this year. Those costs need to be calculated based on the students that we're taking this year because it will be incorporated into the Circuit Breaker reimbursement filing. So therefore, they're sort of blowing up the old model, and we're looking at it all over again. So I don't have any new numbers, but definitely she'll have some new numbers for you in March at your next meeting. In addition to that, we don't have any formal retirements are going to take place at the end of this year. We do have some staffing changes that are still in discussions. We hope to have those sort of wrapped up so we know any budgetary impact on those by your March meeting. But I don't have any of that information to bring forward tonight. Keep in mind, when you see your next round, you guys approved the increase in the stipends for the PLC leaders. The, you know, we've increased it from four to six. So that's about a $7,500 increase that we'll incorporate. Obviously, as I noted, we've had some increase in our special education therapeutic services for some of our students. We're going to look for an increase in that line item too of about $10,000 to make sure we have enough to cover. So we're not in a negative variance. And I'm going to have a small adjustment on your telephone class by about $2,000. So really nothing substantial amounts right now. So I figure I'm going to hold those and roll them out with some, hopefully, some other larger positive variances when we meet in March. I did include for you the annual analysis that we do of the enrollment, where we take the one-year, the three-year, and then half of that, just so you can see how different scenarios that could play out. And you can see that we are, as typical, I think at Pine Hill, the sections will move between grades with the cohorts. And so I think that just gives you some comfort that we look with 20 sections, we look like we can accommodate the different scenarios that potentially would be forthcoming for next year. Remember, we did, Dr. Brown mentioned in her report, how many students we have doing remote. All those students are included in your census, along with homeschool students that were atypical for us. So we took all those nuances of this year into consideration in the projections.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions looking at the enrollment sheet? And since we're not really adjusting for the budget just yet until we get some more feedback and numbers. But I looked at the sections, and like you said, it just moves in between. You know, we just move people based on where the need is for the sections. Does anybody have any questions?
Can I ask a question, Angie of Dr. Brown?
Yeah.
Barb, do we have any sense of the students whose families have decided to homeschool them? Have you had any conversations with them about their plans moving forward? I worry that, you know, some people might grow to like it and, and stick with, with the homeschooling. Do you have any sense at all?
Uh, not, not wholesale sense. I've been in touch with a few families throughout the year who are specifically concerned about the health risk. But I certainly can do some outreach. As, as you know, we, we have about 13 more students being homeschooled this year than is typical. I certainly can do some outreach over the next month or two and, and just check in with families.
Thanks, thanks, Barb.
I do think some people, you know, I, I wonder too if our comfort level, you know, it will change as it, I don't know, because I don't know what fall will bring. I have no idea. I have had a few families reach out to me, you know, so that might be a good barometer. So next we have the second.
Just say one more thing. I mean, I just jumped. So capital, you'll notice I noted, and I included a new five-year plan for you. The, the work that we had initially thought we would put forward for fiscal year 22, when we sort of spent a little more time walking around Pine Hill, we figured, we realized it wasn't really warranted or mandated. So you have no capital request for fiscal year 22. And I did submit your plan to the capital, Town Capital Committee. So that should hopefully be good news for the town and get us ready for the larger potential year, the next, you know, the next year or two out. So that is a change from your December meeting. When we meet again in March, I'll have you just re-vote that new five-year plan. We'll just do one vote to cover both, but wanted to make sure you realize that we did pull off the initial project that we had brought to you in December.
Thank you, Dawn. So now we're going to go to the class size policy. This is the second read of that policy. It's in your packet. The policy is changing so that grades four and five, if you'll remember, aren't different in number than grades K through, K through three, because their policy was for a guidance of 18 to 23 students per class. So that's how it's going to be all the way through. So we will be aligned, grades K through five will be a policy of 18 to 23 students per class. So were there any questions about that? The, the principal working with the professional staff will develop and recommend to the school committee any staffing needs consistent with this policy, which is truly what we do anyway each year. And even if we've been within policy for grades four and five, if we've seen the classes are large or the class makeup and chemistry is such that it would dictate better learning is served by keeping it, you know, within this 23 and under number. That's what we've done anyway. So this is just memorializing pretty much what we've been doing since I've been on the committee now for four years. So are there any questions? So what we need to do now is just, this is our second read-through. So next meeting, we will actually vote on it, correct, Dawn?
I think you're going to vote tonight.
Oh, we are.
Yeah. Required on your agenda.
So what we need to do then is I need a motion to adopt the class size policy change as presented. Megan? So moved. Megan Page in second?
A second, Amanda Brown.
Thank you, Amanda. Any discussion?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
And this, I don't know, Dr. Brown, if you know the answer to this yet. So I'm just thinking about next year and thinking about the ways in which kids will need additional support emotionally, socially, academically. And I'm wondering what the, the assistance will look like in classrooms, assuming that we're going to keep classes within the same guidelines. What kind of additional support will teachers have so that kids have that extra support they will need?
From a budget development standpoint, we have gone back to our original ratios of one educational assistant per kindergarten classroom and one educational assistant per grade level thereafter. As you know, we have a plethora of educational assistants through special education that are student service delivery specific. But from a general education standpoint, our budget is going back to our original ratios.
I will add, Amanda, that we are, every day, I think there's new grants coming out. And one of the grants that are rolling out right now is an extension of the CARES grant that was a small grant for us, but it's really to support those needs. You know, they're really looking at the mental health. And so this new grant that just came out actually has every school district was given $10,000 for mental health on top of a nice size amount of money that can be used over all the way out to fiscal year 23 to sort of help with some of these things. Every district's in a different situation. So if it comes to be that we need to add additional educational assistance to make up for some of this, we're going to have funds available outside the operating fund to be able to cover for that need due to what happened this year, or you know what I'm saying? So they're, they're looking that this isn't just a one-and-done situation for this year, that some of this is going to carry over. And so they're making sure there's funding to cover fiscal year 22 and if needed, fiscal year 23.
Right. And we're working under Beth and Kate McCarthy's leadership. As you know, we've, we've talked in the past about strengthening what used to be called RTI, Response to Intervention, is now packaged as MTSS. But it's that tiered intervention for social, emotional, behavioral, and academic learning needs that children may have if they're not making effective progress through a robust general education, instruction, and strategies and support. As recently as today, there was a webinar on that that, that some of our colleagues attended. So we're, that's an important part of what we need to strengthen in general and in response to the pandemic.
Perfect. Thank you.
Also important to consider is that, you probably know this, Amanda, from your teaching, but although some of our special education, all of our special education aides are assigned to certain students, there's still adults in the classroom who can, can help at times and provide an additional layer of support. I think sometimes we, we think too much in silos and that only a general education assistant can help with general education students, and it really doesn't work that way. Especially at Pine Hill and Chickering, where people really think in terms of a team approach to the kids. So, but again, that's a good point, that if we need to, if we need to add, we can do that. And what's really difficult is assessing where we are and what kind of ground has been lost. And I think Beth had mentioned to me the other day that we are in fact trying to track that data to see what kind of ground has been lost. And, and now I'm assuming Beth, that's not ready for public consumption, but that's not working. Can't hear you.
We just formalized that at the elementary leadership team meeting the other day. So that's going to be going out to curriculum leaders, probably right after vacation. And then we can certainly share summaries and patterns.
All right. So is there any other discussion? But those were good points, Amanda, because we are going to have to pivot. As we've learned through this, we, we have to be creative now in order to meet the needs of the children. So with that being said, I've had a first by Megan and a second by Amanda. And I'll go ahead and poll for a vote. So Nancy?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. So our class size policy, we adopted. Second is another policy, and this one is a lot more involved. It is the harassment policy and the harassment investigation procedures. As you know, this was addressed at the last joint school committee meeting in January. And so this is just our first read here at our Sherburne School Committee level. So there were a lot of changes in this, and I don't know really how to answer this other than we needed to get more in line with what has been mandated, you know, since, since we adopted this policy. So first of all, are there any questions before I go forward with this? Because there, there's a lot to it. As you can see, it was a pretty long policy. No? So with the first read, this is all we have to do is to make sure that there are no glaring, because we're merging, some of them are with regards to pronouns and how we identify what is harassment and what is bullying. So we have, we have noted some of these definitions. So with that being said, if you have any questions or if you see any adjustments that need to be made, if you want to state any of those now, if not, then we'll do our next read at the next meeting. Okay, all right. So thank you all. That one was, that one was hard. And I give full credit to Sarah, who's on the policy committee with me for going through that with a fine-tooth comb and finding every little bit. So I appreciate that. So finally, we have the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from December 14th. And I went through them, and I did not see anything that appeared to be incorrect. Did anyone else see anything that they can recollect? It was December, so it was a blur of a month, but I did not see anything that was missed or was misrepresented in the notes. Anyone else? All right. So if that's the case, would someone please make a motion to approve the minutes of December 14th, 2020?
Or Angie, you have the donation too. So it's the whole consent agenda.
I was the donation too. Wait, let me find my donation, because I don't have, I didn't print that part out. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah. GSCF gave each school a water bottle filler. So, so many of our water fountains are sort of shut down during COVID. So we're working to get Sherburne one right when you walk in. You've got the double water fountain, the high-low. That's the one we're looking to switch out. It's great that they gifted to us. The bad thing is everyone of their brothers looking for water bottle fillers right now. So we're, we're sort of just trying to find ones that are available now, but we'll switch that out, and that'll be great for the students. But we'll switch that out and that'll be great for the students to be able to to fill their water bottles up.
And we also have one that we in the library currently too.
Right.
These are, these are really hugely important in terms of saving on plastic. And we started to shift the thinking, so important that it happened at the earliest ages. And I know that as part of the Sustainability Task Force, this was one of the things we were hoping for. So this will not only make people happy to know that these are going in. They're already aware that we were asking for these, but but they'll be super excited to feel as if they're having an impact too.
But I have to say that when I went on college tours with my daughter, we took our own water bottles and did the same thing. Plus, I just think water fountains are jerky, so especially post-COVID. I don't really want to do that. So I think the water bottle fillers are great.
Well, it's interesting. Some some of the older kids were saying, well, the students aren't really sure if they can drink from a water bottle in class. So they were afraid to ask. So we made sure to clarify that, in fact, they can because they have their masks on, but you know, we don't need our students to be dehydrated, so.
No, and I think with a mask on, sometimes I feel more dehydrated, probably because I'm not drinking as much and I need to take a pause.
Totally agree.
All right, so we need the approval of the minutes and the donation, correct, Dawn?
Correct.
Yes. So do I have someone to make a motion for that?
Nancy Cordell, so moved.
And a second?
Amanda Brown, second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll poll for the vote. Megan?
Megan Page, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Nancy?
Nancy Cordell, yes.
And Angie Johnson, yes. And then contained within your packet are the region school committee minutes for December eighth and January twelfth, as well as the Dover School Committee minutes of December seventeenth. Also, if you have any items for our March ninth meeting, if you'll get those to myself or to Cheryl so that we can put it on, we'll have more budget discussion then. And we won't have had our meeting at that point, will we, Dawn, on the budget with town that's after that?
So no, no, it's before, actually. Yeah, we're meeting with the town advisory on February twenty-fourth. So on March ninth, we'll actually open the meeting and present your version two of your budget. Then you'll you'll take a break and do your open hearing. So we'll do the the full budget presentation and then come back and the committee can answer or ask any other questions. And then you will approve your final fiscal year twenty-two budget at that meeting.
What time is that meeting coming before the the combined warrant advisory meeting?
No, it's after.
After.
On the twenty-fourth, yeah, we're starting with the region. We anticipate an eight o'clock start for Sherburne piece.
Yeah. I just blocked out the evening. I thought it might be easier because you never know. So with that being said, if there's nothing else, like I said, bring your math thinking caps on the next, on the March ninth meeting night because we'll be talking budgets, which are always fun. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
So a second?
Nancy Cordell, second.
All right, all in favor? We can just say aye for this one. Aye, I think we're good. I don't think anyone wants to stay longer. Thank you all, and I will see you all in about twenty-six minutes for the joint meeting.
See you then.
Thank you, and thank you all, staff.